Chris, how long were you, when you worked at the, uh, when you tried? It's about a long time ago. You were at Washto County for a couple of years.
Yeah.
So we've been here about a year and a half.
Okay.
We started in Chicago. Yeah, I suppose. We're making this in Chicago. Yeah, the western, it's the, it's pretty. Yeah, they're like Cajun drivers. We'll talk that.
Well, I'm sure you're. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order and we'll begin with a roll call.
John Flansburgh.
Here.
Danielle Henderson.
Here.
Bill Houck. Michael D. Martini.
Here.
Michael Drinkwater.
Here.
John Inlow.
Here.
John Zimmerman.
Here.
Mickey Hazelwood. John Martini. Darren Price.
Here.
Dave Solero.
Here.
And the non-voting members, Harry Fonestock. Thomas Payette.
Here.
Mylin Nagoyan.
Here.
And Cindy Churcik.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, very good. We'll go ahead then and move into item number two, public comments. Do we have any public comment, Donna?
We have no request for public comment.
Okay, then moving to item number three, approval of the agenda. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Price, second by Commissioner Zimmerman, right? Why do, I, I, sorry about that. Commissioner Zimmerman, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, we now, next item is for the approval of the minutes from the February first, two thousand seventeen meeting. Motion from Commissioner Price, second from Commissioner Solero. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item number five, review, a final review of the two thousand sixteen comprehensive regional management, water management plan. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I included in your packet a brief staff report that outlines changes to the draft plan that you've seen up until this date based on comments that I received from commissioners. And I can just go through those very briefly. In chapter one, there's a change to the policy on conjunctive management of surface water and groundwater for drought planning. And in December, you took action to change that from a nine-year standard to an eight-year standard to comply with TUMWORF planning and with, with Truckee River operating agreement. In chapter two, there's a little bit of text on the Mercury Study that RTC has done when, with respect to the Southeast Connector Project. We didn't have really much in there, so these are all just very minor changes, just a couple of sentences. Chapter three, I got a little bit of updated text from Sun Valley GID from Commissioner Price, so we inserted that in place of what was there before. In chapter four, we, we generalized some of the references to industrial users down, downstream outside the Truckee Meadow Service area and just called it reclaimed water use outside the Truckee Meadow Service area. Chapter five, there's a little bit about the maintenance agreements that the county and the cities have with various ditch companies, just to bring that up to current. Chapter six, there was some discussion last meeting about added notes with respect to the water balance model, so I had Mr. Bizoni insert those from StanTech and, and those are all included in the current version. And then we added the tables that essentially tabulate the issues and action plans in chapter nine. Chris and I are still reviewing those tables for redundancies and consistency and acronyms and things like that, but they essentially say what they should say. There were no changes to chapters seven on water conservation, chapter eight, cost and financing. All of the chapters have been provided in the updated form to StanTech for formatting and editorial review, so I expect to get those back from them in about a week. And I would turn it over to you for any additional comments or questions regarding the draft chapters that are under review today, and then I would accept any appropriate direction. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so are any comments, questions from the commission? Any questions on any of the revisions, requests that were put forth? Seeing none, it's a staff recommendation for us to accept the edits in additions to these draft chapters. And the intent here is to forward this to the Western Region Water Commission, which is in.
Next two items.
The next two items, so.
That's correct.
So if we do not have any, any adds to this? Do I have a motion?
I just have one question.
Yes, Commissioner Price.
Jim, that reference, number chapter four, does that reference what regional planning is using? Would they be okay with that performance? I mean, going from trick center to industrial uses outside the TMSA?
I don't think it, it really affects regional planning.
Well, I'm not worried about the fact that you know we're supposed to show that it's a performance, whatever word you use. So I just, I'm just wanting to make sure that that word wasn't performance with regional planning as far as our performance in the whole.
I, well, I haven't asked them that specifically, but, but it should be because they have a change in their policy where it's allowable to take trunk infrastructure for effluent reuse outside the Truckee Meadow Service area. So I tried to word it as consistently as I could with, with their rule change.
Okay, other comments? Seeing none, um, do we have a recommendation? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to, I'll move to accept the edits in additions to the draft chapters as presented.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Inlow. Any comments on this item? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item number six is the one thirty public hearing on the two thousand sixteen comprehensive regional water management plan. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it would be appropriate at this point just to open up the public hearing, to ask for any public comment, and then as the commission has already taken action on the edits, I don't believe that the commission would need to take any further action other than just to open and close the public hearing in here from the public. I would defer to counsel if there's any point that I've missed.
Commissioners can make additional comments if they so desire. Okay, then we'll open the public hearing on the two thousand sixteen comprehensive regional water management plan and take any public comment. Donna, do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
All right. Well, seeing no public comments, any comment from the commission? It's been a long lift.
We've already done all the work.
Okay, seeing none, um, uh, as far as a action item?
We'll close the public hearing and move to the next item.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move to item number seven, possible approval of a resolution to recommend the adoption of the western re, uh, by the Western Region Water Commission of the two thousand sixteen comprehensive regional water management plan. Item number seven.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the resolution is in your packet. I don't know if it's appropriate to read it into the record. It's, it's a, it's a whole page.
I think it's too lengthy to read. If anyone has any questions, they can raise them. Thank you.
Jim, has anything changed on this other than the title?
The resolution itself, it's, it's very similar to five years ago.
There, there are type of gra, there are grammatical substantive little revisions to make it more consistent with some of the language of the statute and to reflect that this is both an updated and amended plan. Even though that's not stated in the plan itself, we went around and around on that and just decided to call it the two thousand sixteen comprehensive water regional, regional water management plan rather than updated or amended because I think that's very much implicit. Thank you.
The last question out of curiosity then is, have we ever amended it other than per the law?
We have. I don't think since the creation of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, we've done an intermediate, or interim amendment, but before two thousand eight, there were two or three amendments that were brought in in between the five-year review.
So some are not required, some just come up?
Right.
Okay, well, 'cause the very last sentence on the first page caught my eye, that's why I asked. Whether or not it was a requirement per the law, or if there's a potential it could be amended between the five-year plan portion, so.
It, it could be.
That's all.
Let me, yeah, the plan can be amended at any time as necessary and required, and there was one interim amendment, two thousand eight or two thousand nine, and, and as I recall, it was to adopt those facility plans that were prepared by the Regional Water Planning Commission and the old regional water, uh, before Western Regional Water Commission to conform with the orders contained in the regional plant settlement agreement. Does that sound correct? I remember doing an interim amendment in two thousand nine or two thousand ten.
Okay, um, then, then I stand corrected. I'm sure that's, that's right.
But it was to deal, as Commissioner Price indicated, with one specific item, so I guess the answer is it can, it can always be amended as necessary to deal with those things if, if they're required.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, I think what we're referring to is an amendment to the previous plan before the Western Region Water Commission was required to redo the plan in total upon its, when we were formed. That amendment happened right before we did that, and so when we amended la, when we put together the original plan for this body, all those were included, and so from the time we have our last plan, I had our last plan to this plan, there have been no amendments.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank staff. A lot of ours have been in here, not just from, from your staff directly, but obviously a lot of input from collective staffs of the different agencies and working groups, so appreciate all the time and effort that has gone into this update. So the item before us is a recommendation, approval of this resolution to the Western Region Water Commission. Do I have a motion? I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second, so any discussion on this question? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim. Item number eight, presentation on a proposed University of Nevada Reno water innovation campus project and possible recommendation to the Western Region Water Commission to include twenty-five thousand to the project in the FY seventeen eighteen tentative budget. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On your agenda, my name appears and then that of Krishna Pegila, but I would like to call up Rick Warner from Washto County's engineering staff to introduce Dr. Pegila. This, in my opinion, is, is an exciting and important opportunity to partner with the, with the university on something that's kind of a brand-new idea, so without any further discussion from me, I'd like to bring Rick Warner to the podium.
Fantastic. Jim, thank you. We did have Dr. Pegila provided a PowerPoint, too. I don't know if we can bring that up or a bit later, but it's real, it's my honor and privilege really to introduce this item, and thank you, Jim, for allowing me the opportunity. Very recently, Dr. Pegila from UNR has, has come to the Reno area from greater Chicago, and I'll introduce him in just a bit, but he's a world-renowned researcher in water and water innovation and research, and both water, wastewater, storm water, and also biosolids. So having him come to the Reno area is just a fantastic opportunity for this community. And if you might recall, just about six months ago, we introduced an item for advanced water treatment, potable reuse technology evaluation, that Dr. Pegila would be, would be doing our evaluations for us. So we already have a rich history of working with the university, and really the top agencies there, if you can think of that PowerPoint that's presented, the University of Nevada, Reno, Sparks, Washto County, TUMWORF, TUMWOW, this body as well. What we're proposing is a university innovation campus in which all these agencies would be a partner, and really, Jim, if you could help me, well, I can have it right here. This is a little bit lengthy sentence, but really the concept is it's a shared vision statement and an effort by the regional entities to come together with the university to develop leading-edge technologies and integrated solutions for this community. And although we all work together and we work with consultants and we work with the university already, bringing us all together in one sort of collaborative, sort of rich learning environment in which the research capabilities of the university are directly in our access is really exciting. And Dr. Pegila will recognize some other cities and agencies that have done similar around the U.S. and the world, but to bring something like this to the Reno area is just fascinating concept. We are still working the concept, and this is actually the first public time and opportunity to come out and talk a little bit more about this. But in concept, the university would house all the intellectual property, the agencies would do the collaborative effort, so then we could share. We could go out and get other experts to come to the community. We can eventually become leading experts in a hub of our own, so we could export some of our institutional knowledge and intellectual property as well. The inspiration is, is really straightforward. This is sort of preaching to the choir, this, this body of experts here. But as you know, the Northern Nevada, we're always sort of the linchpin of, you know, sort of growth and sort of the quality of life revolves a lot about water strategy, sustainability, resiliency, and we're all working very, very carefully on creating thoughtfully planned water planning efforts and infrastructure and really trying to create that leadership opportunity in which this community and this body of experts are absolutely recognized by our community as being leaders. So in concept, this, again, this water innovation campus would be a collaboration of a lot of leading agencies, and what we call them at present is sort of charter members. And so a lot of the initial thoughts about what some of the work products might be and some of the research topics would be housed under the charter members, and we would actually be guiding a, a lot of, you know, the future work. Certainly other people can join in, but really having this designation as a charter member in which they ask of you today is, is to become a charter member along with TUMWOW in the city of Reno, Sparks, Reno, Washto County, and TUMWORF as well. So that's sort of the concept. Dr. Pegila is here to ask more questions of you and get response, but again, I want to make a, an opportunity, and thank you, Jim. I've known Krishna for many, many years. He's recognized worldwide as a researcher, academic, working closely with students. Really his focus is in creating sort of regionally-based technology and innovation, and so he's come to the university as the program director for environmental engineering. Again, world-renowned researcher, and he should be familiar with you, just in, I guess in August, we awarded him the six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar contract to help us with the advanced water treatment technologies for potable reuse. Already, and we're, we want to come back and give you an update on that, but already we have three PhD students working on that project as well, so great progress, and I want to introduce Krishna, and he can talk a little bit more about the concept for the innovation campus.
Mr. Chairman, if I could break in for a second.
Yes.
It looks like we can't get the monitors to come up, but you do have a hard copy of the presentation at, at your desk, so thanks. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Jim. Dr. Pegila.
Thank you, Chairman Flansburgh, and commissioners for giving this opportunity. Thank you, Rick, for the introduction. Mr. Smitherman as well. This is a very exciting opportunity for the university to work with the community, to the utilities, in a, in a new environment where we can do some wonderful things for the community, for the regional needs, and, and take that leadership for the university in the national and the international circles. That way we can be recognized for our work here and perhaps get more resources to the university to build the research and development capacity. So just to kind of continue with the conversation that Rick started, I would like to focus on some of the things that are, are more details of this water innovation campus is that we want to focus on areas that are of relevant and present need for the community such as water reclamation and reuse, which we are already working on, storm water management, water treatment, and, and in a very important area, which is very dear to my heart, is resource recovery. That is bringing resources out of waste for reuse in a circular economy. Of course, aspects such as water education, both for the community as well as for the students, are going to be an important part of that. And, and how do we do this, this is that we can have a range of activities, and this list is by no means exhaustive and, and not final. This is where the charter member group would be able to identify the activities as well as the needs. So some of those things are looking at what are the needs for each of the agencies and what are the needs for the region as a whole. I know the, the, the commission itself is already doing that in many ways, but more detailed technical needs assessment would be one of the programming issues, early programming issues as part of this campus. As well as exchanging knowledge with each other and, and developing human resources here that can address the new knowledge economy, particularly dealing with water. And, and if and when some intellectual property is developed out of this, that will be available to the community without any, any, any hindrances, but we will at least be able to protect it so that we don't have to pay for the intellectual property in the future if somebody were to, you know, patent that or so on and so forth. Another activity that I think is very critical for us to put us a little bit more visible map in the country and around the nation is to, for the university in collaboration with the community to host national and international conferences related to water. We are already doing lots of fantastic things here, and this water innovation campus will provide us a platform to do that, so, and we have many ideas in, in, in mind, and, and I had articulated that with some of you earlier, and we would like to continue that conversation as part of this water innovation campus. The question you might ask is why? This is really important because this is what is the trend around the nation, where local water utilities are collaborating with the universities, and this is the new way of, of doing things, university utility collaborative relationship where we have the ability. And that's we can address the regional needs in-house and we can develop that national visibility, and more importantly, the university has been putting in a lot of resources to make UNR to be a category-one research very high. It's a Carnegie classification, very high classification, which is, we're going to be in a league of about fifty to hundred universities around the country, and we are at one level below that, and this will be really an important part of that. And the university administration, from the provost on to the department chair, are really, really excited about things like this. And, and I mentioned about the industry trends. In fact, if you see this map here, which is in your handout, those color-coded ones are levels of what are known as testbed facilities around the country, where technologies can be demonstrated, technologies can be developed. The lowest level is, is at a university lab, and the largest level is, is, is what is called a level four is at an operating water facility where we can demonstrate and develop technologies full-scale with skilled operators available to test it. So our goal is to go at least to level three, which is almost a near-full-scale pilot demonstration, or, or to level four with the partners to be able to demonstrate technologies and develop them for, for local and regional needs. I have had several discussions with the university administration in this regard because UNR would be a charter member, and, and College of Engineering and the dean's office, as well as the vice president for research and innovation, they have come out very, very strongly. In fact, they are very excited to be able to do this, so I got commitment from both college as well as the university level to contribute fifty K per year to gather towards the innovation campus for the first three years. And they've also committed to any charter member fees to develop and, and, and operate the water innovation campus for the first three years would be without any indirect cost, which is a significant burden if, if that wasn't true. The dean of engineering just committed funds to upgrade some of the facilities, which will be part of the water innovation campus, as well as we're going to get some more facilities in the near future. So I won't go over the whole list, but in general, I can tell you that the University of Nevada Reno is very excited and, and strongly supportive of this effort. Our next efforts would be, would be to have conversation with the charter members, who will, we would like the charter members to fund the first three years for several activities and needs, and then the center or the innovation campus would become self-sustaining after three years through either project, external project grants or projects that the members as well as the affiliate members are going to provide. And, and part of this effort in the first few weeks to few months is the charter members really define a, a way for us to operate this innovation campus where the university would be guided in what needs to be done, how it's to be done, so. And then we will go out and look for both affiliate members as well as other utilities around the nation. In fact, we have had several conversations with national leaders like the Water Environment and Reuse Foundation and, and other cities who are excited to be part of something like this, and I think it's a great opportunity for us. So with that, I want to thank you for your attention, and I would turn it over to Mr. Smitherman, and I would be happy to answer any questions. There are a couple of examples also in your folder, but in the interest of time, I would not go into that. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
All right, thank you. Jim?
So, so, Mr. Chairman, what the request is today is just to, um, for you to consider directing staff to include in, in next fiscal year's budget, a twenty-five thousand dollar item. That would be the initial year's dues for charter membership in the, uh, in the, in the water innovations campus. Pardon me? Yeah, the advantages may be worth the price. I know that the presentation has made to some senior-level staff people at the jurisdictions. I believe that, you know, unofficially at least, that there is buy-in from local governments, and so this would be, as Rick had pointed out, the first public offering for charter membership. So, we would bring back at a later date, request for your approval of an interlocal agreement, but at this point, it would just be a request for the funding to be set aside in next year's budget. There's still time to do that, the budget hasn't been approved, it hasn't been forwarded to the Western Regional Water Commission at this point, so it would just be an amendment to the budget that you saw a couple of months ago. With that, I'll turn it back to you for deliberation.
Jim, thank you for that explanation. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Price?
Jim, the commitments for three years, so are we just going to see this every year, or should we commit to three years?
Everybody else? You could, you could direct a commitment for three years. As you know, we budget year by year, and so...
Well, so do all these other organizations, though.
Right, right. I didn't want to bite off too much and hit you with too much.
I understand. I just felt odd committing only to a year, if you have commitments from these other organizations for three years to make the project a success. That's the only thing I thought.
I think this is just to get it in the budget, then we'll come back with an interlocal for the 75.
Every single year?
Yes, for a three-year commitment. This is just for this year.
Darren specifically saying that we would set aside, we'd put it in the budget for this year, but the interlocal agreement would be the one that would be looking at a commitment for the three years.
Okay, okay.
This would just be setting money aside in the budget for the ability, for the partnership.
Well, with that said, I'd make a motion to commit the funding then, and change the budget.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second from Commissioner Drinkwater. I know for the city of Reno, I mean, and I assume for all our other agencies, this is all going to have to go to those agencies, we're going to have to have this discussion, and that interlocal will also have to go through, but this gets us an opportunity to start everyone thinking that way. Okay? No further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Chairman Mansberg and all the Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, item number nine, discussion and possible recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission for approval of one-year, no-cost time extension. Chris?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This particular item, this was an addendum that we approved in 2005. It was part of the retrofitting of the precipitation gauges for the cloud seeding program. Unfortunately, this was a, it was a contract in 2014 and an amendment in 2015. Unfortunately, the amendment in 2015 was approved in mid-November, it was pretty much too late for that year for them to do anything, so we really kind of lost a year on this project, and this is just an extension of time so they can complete it. So, with that, I'd...
Chris, I just want to clarify, your first statement was in 2005.
I'm sorry, I meant 15.
So, 2015, thank you.
Excuse me.
All right, questions from the commission? Motion? Commissioner Price?
We have issues with land associated where these gauges were placed, and you were going to take a look at that and come back?
Yeah, I worked that through...
I believe that was the holdup before, something is, we weren't ready, because we were waiting to see if we could keep them in the same locations based on permission from the landowners or something.
Well, I did an initial, I worked initially with DRI in obtaining some locations for areas that were a little bit more tricky, like Forest Service areas, places within the Tahoe Basin, that was the, those were the ones that were a little bit tricky. My understanding is, though, that we've secured the locations, it's just the deployment of the actual rain gauges, they just haven't had a chance to do that. They just don't have, they haven't had sufficient time, they lost a year, basically, is what they did.
Questions? May I have a motion? Don't everybody speak at once? Commissioner Solero?
I'll make a motion to make a recommendation of the WRAWC to approve a second amendment to the interlocal agreement with DRI for a one-year, no-cost time extension.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Zimmerman. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, Program Manager's Report. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, these items are what you're used to seeing in the Program Manager's Report, so we've got the first item, 10A, is just a rundown of the status of the projects that are being funded by the Regional Water Management Fund. One that I don't see on here, that I can give you a little bit of an update, but some of you know more about it than me, is that Highland Canal Project. I believe that contracts have been awarded for that one, there's no notice to proceed as of February 7th, I think is the last time I got a report on it, but there is something like a nine-month construction schedule, and I've been advised that we should expect billing before the end of this fiscal year for the contract that we have on that, the $250,000 contribution to that project. Otherwise, I think the report is fairly complete.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Questions for anyone regarding the status of projects and work plan? Okay? Yes, Commissioner Nlow?
So, Chris, you and I both reached out to DRI on the cloud seeding efforts and asked them to basically stop work. I haven't heard back from Frank, and I was curious if you had, because we, the objective was to stop, and then hopefully they didn't spend all the money, and that money could be rolled over into subsequent years as necessary.
Yeah, a good point, I'm glad you brought that up. Interestingly, and I had a chance to talk to Frank McDonough at the conference, NWRA Conference, he indicated that they had suspended operations, actually in early January, and were just waiting out to see what was going to happen. And following our conversation, I just asked, I asked if he could just cease all operations for the year. He said, yes, they would do that, and they would apply whatever remainers left over towards next year's budget. And so, I think there's a base cost, as I think we've discussed, for the cost, because they have to move, move to move, all the equipment to and from the sites. And then there's a solution cost that they incur at the beginning of every year, but whatever's remaining from that, we should be able to add to, should be available to us next year. So, there's going to be a cost, and the question is whether or not, how the money is applied, whether it applies to Tomo or here, it really would work either way for us. So, I'll let you know as soon as I get something back from him.
All right, good question. Jim, any discussion on the financial report?
Just that our revenues are looking good compared to what our planned budget is, and our expenditures are well below what the plan is, so I think we're looking good for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Okay. Questions from the commission? Seeing none, we'll move to item number 11, discussion regarding location and possible agenda items for the April 5th meeting. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The April 5th meeting would be held at the same time and in this location. The only agenda item that I have right now is election of officers. There may be some things that come up between now and then, but I think it probably would be important just to hold a meeting so that you can no longer have to show up as chairman. But I would leave that to your discussion.
Okay, John?
I will also have a legislative report for this commission at that meeting.
Okay. Are there any items from the members of the commission for future, either future in April or beyond? Seeing, yes, John?
No, I would like to see, we've talked about it a little bit, but I know Danielle's not working on these issues, but the ditch flooding issues, that seems to be a gap in just planning and potentially response and so forth. I mean, we get a lot of questions, I know the county and the city have been dealing with it, maybe Sparks not so much, but at some point, I think it would be appropriate to discuss that and see if it's worthwhile kind of raising the level of awareness on the ditch flooding issues that this community just recently experienced, and what steps may be taken in the future to address that.
Very good, we'll coordinate on that. I'm guessing that might take longer than a couple of weeks to put a report together and bring it back in April, so, but it is a very worthy item of discussion.
Right, okay, I can put that on that future agendas list.
Other items? Seeing none. We don't necessarily need to take actions, so we'll move to item number 12, Commission Comments. Any comments from any of the members of the commission? We're a subdued group today. All right, well, as I mentioned earlier, it was a heavy lift. Staff comments, Jim? Chris?
Yeah, one comment, I've received a request this week from Department of Transit, State Department of Transportation for GIS coverage for storm drain systems. They're thinking about their NPD stormwater program, and where their facilities may connect with the counties or with the municipal storm systems, so that they could prioritize addressing problems, maybe treatment of that sort of thing. They don't want to be responsible for a water quality problem in a receiving water that, I guess, the pollutants would be conveyed through somebody else's stormwater system. This is something that I've talked with regional planning about a bit because of our efforts in putting together GIS coverages for water systems and wastewater and reclaimed water systems, and that's one that has been on Jeremy Smith and my radar, but it's one that we haven't been able to go very far down the road. And now, there's a request from Endot for that kind of information, and so, it might be something that we could discuss, maybe along with the ditch issues, since they're obviously related, and maybe look into just how much current GIS coverage there is that could be compiled into one regional network of storm drain systems. So, just a topic for thought.
And finally, public comment. Any public comments? Anyone wish to speak? Donna, do we have any public comment cards?
We have no public comment.
Okay, then item number 15 is adjournment. Do I have a motion? Motion, second, all in favor? We are adjourned.
It'd be interesting to see how the flood model did. Put those loads in there to see if the model matched what happened. Did pretty good for the river modeling that we got them to fly ahead of time. We didn't get that high, but it was, it really helped inform us of what we needed for the Trekkie River.